This is a resumption of the work session that we started last week reviewing police department policies. Our Chair, Betsy Whitman, is participating remotely via Zoom, so I'll moderate this work session. So we'll start with Chief Jolly.
Okay, thank you. Just as a continuation, are you able to bring up the?
Yep.
Okay. From the last meeting, we did discuss a little bit about our verbal de-escalation. That seemed like a topic that we wanted to discuss a little further. So I did put a few slides together here to kind of continue with that conversation and give you a little bit more information about our training that we receive and what the officers do as far as our verbal de-escalation goes here. All right. All right, so obviously we know the ability for our officers to communicate is the absolute most essential skill that we have to possess. Our officers have to be able to speak to any person, any age, any race, any ethnicity, it doesn't matter. We need to be able to make sure we can communicate with everybody that we encounter. So it's absolute essential skill to be successful as a police officer. Our officers have received training in verbal de-escalation and conflict management, communication skills that help them deal with difficult and argumentative verbal interactions with citizens. Some of the goals of the training that we have gone through, and again, just to remind you, 2018, we went through a mandatory in-service class that was put on by the state related to de-escalation. In 2019, we went through a block as well that was put on here locally by officers from State College of Burrow, who went through a train-the-trainer session. And also CIT provides de-escalation techniques in the curriculum as well. But some of the goals that we've received from some of the trainings would be to provide our officers with expanded verbal de-escalation tools, enhancing officer safety and community safety, and then improving the relationships that we have between the police department and the community. So some of the fundamentals and techniques that we learn in the trainings, safety is paramount for everybody involved. Obviously, that's officer safety, community safety, the person that we're interacting with, if somebody we're taking into custody, their safety is our main responsibility as well. And communication, again, communication is paramount. We need to be able to discuss, get our message across, and be able to hear what people are saying to us. Having patience and understanding, having a caring, sincere attitude, and being compassionate. Treating people with dignity and respect, absolutely must treat people with dignity and respect, and be honest with them. There's times, sometimes we have to relay a difficult message to somebody, but we need to make sure that we're honest with the individuals we deal with so that if we ever do deal with somebody again, they know. Encounter with a police officer with Patton Township Police Department, we were honest with them. So we have that rapport for the next time. Explaining limits to them, showing empathy, suggesting alternative behaviors, and also addressing the consequences of inappropriate behavior with them. For the officers to know themselves, to have confidence, to be prepared, to be clear and precise, to be absorbent to details. There's a lot going on at these calls, so make sure that their heads are kind of on a swivel and kind of soaking everything in to make sure that they realize everything that's going on at the scene that they might be at. And that's also very important for them to be flexible as well. Things for the officers to be aware of, again, these are takeaways from the trainings we've received, is their voice and their tone. We all know that sometimes it's not necessarily what you say, it's how you say it. So that's basically addressing that. Being attentive to words, the voice, tone, and body language, yours and theirs, your demeanor, and then also your projected sincerity. Some ways to open and maintain dialogue and communication, again, techniques that we've learned through the trainings are by opening, asking open-ended questions, so what, how, and when, and letting them provide information to you, and then being a very good listener, using the individual's first name if possible, being polite, being friendly. Having a friendly conversation is always important and necessary even under difficult circumstances. And then we all know a very important part of communication is being able to actively listen. So that way, we're lowering emotions, establishing rapport, and influencing the individual to comply, gathering information on the individual's situation, and encouraging a behavior change from that individual. One of the biggest things, obviously, de-escalate, we're looking to slow things down. So during a crisis situation, the individual may be talking quickly or even pacing back and forth quickly. So our officers have learned that they can speak slower and then sometimes even slowly keep pace with an individual. When the individual sees that, they may mirror that, and actually, they will slow down their speech, slow down their movements, which is again, what we're looking for to help de-escalate the situation. So real quickly, just some helpful reminders from takeaways from, again, the trainings that we've received over the past couple of years. In one class, it was mentioned to us that, listen, ultimately, there's nothing magical about talking someone down. You treat others the way you yourself would want to be treated. Maintain a calm, respectful language, will always accomplish more than a tone is angry or inflammatory, scolding, or patronizing. It's simply a matter of transferring your own self-sense of calm to the agitated subject in the hope that he or she is open to responding positively to your respectful action. Personally, I believe, and this isn't just for Patton Township Police Officers, I think all police officers all across the world really are experts at this, and if we don't want to say they're experts, they're very, very good at it. And it's not necessarily from training they've received. The training helps, and I think the training gives us the tools to understand why de-escalation works when we're out in the field. But I can tell you, probably if my officers are on a call right now, they could be in the process of de-escalating something just as we speak. It's something that they do daily, they have really, really a lot of practice at it, and is why they become so good at it. Police, you know, we're not called when everybody's having a really good day. Generally, we get a phone call when there's some type of conflict in somebody's life, they're having some type of issue, whether it be with a roommate, a neighbor, whatever the case may be. So we get there, and oftentimes, there's more than one party that we need to de-escalate. But it could be as simple as, again, a neighbor dispute over a property line or something along those lines. Our officers deal with these situations every day, so again, just the practice they receive out in the field really makes them experts at it. And it doesn't even have to be something criminal necessarily, you know, it could be from a traffic stop. We could be stopping a vehicle where it's a young driver, it's the first time they've ever been stopped by the police. We know, you know, from our own experiences, that that's a very traumatic occurrence for somebody. So there may be some high emotions, they may be crying, so we know that we need to de-escalate that person and get them to the point where they understand that we're remaining calm and get them to a point where we can have a good, positive interaction with them. Could be even, you know, unfortunately, going to do a notification about a death in the family, there's going to be a lot of emotion. So again, using those skills to de-escalate. And again, the training, I think, is fantastic, it's given us a lot of tools and a lot of tips. But like I said, I think our officers really do a fantastic job of de-escalating just based on really their day-to-day interactions that they have with the public. I just wanted to touch on that very briefly, I don't want to take up too much time on the de-escalation, we hit on it a little bit last time, but I just wanted to give you that little bit more information about it. So I don't know if we want to stop for a second and see if there's any questions related to that, and then we can kind of move forward. The next topic I did a little bit of work on was mental health.
All right, any questions from the board? Doug, I can't see any, oh, here we go. Elliot has his hand raised, yes Elliot?
It isn't just about the escalation, but I'm really impressed looking at the psychological information and the training on emotions and mental situations that you sent us.
Any other board members with questions? Is that you, Betsy? Yeah, Betsy has her hand raised.
Chief Jolly, did you say you had some other slides to present, or are we gonna go into a?
Yeah, I do have, the next portion's more about focusing on mental health, I know that was brought up at the end of the last meeting. So I have some slides to present just about kind of walking through the process of mental health calls as well.
I'll wait till after all your slides are done, mine are sort of overall questions. Great.
Pam?
No, I'm with Betsy, I'm gonna wait till the end.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Anyone else? No, all right, go ahead, Chief.
Okay. And my pointer is not, okay. As soon as we get this figured out here, we'll get moving. Well, while Doug's bringing that up, the next section I wanted to touch on, it was brought up and a couple of different questions, relates to mental health calls for service and 302 warrants. So basically, just real quickly to give you a little bit of insight, what a 302 warrant, what I'm referring to. It's an involuntary commitment. So involuntary commitment is an application for emergency evaluation and treatment of persons who are considered dangerous to themselves or others due to a mental illness. So I just wanted to again, walk you through, is she good to go?
Yeah.
Just walk you through kind of the police response to mental health calls and give you, you know, some of the options that we have and kind of how things proceed here at Patton Township when we deal with a call for service for a mental health. So basically, what happens, we have somebody who calls, they are in crisis, and they decide to seek help possibly on their own. So they can call for 911 assistance, or somebody else can call on their behalf and say that, you know, that there's an individual at a certain location who is in crisis and need of assistance. So our officers will get dispatched, if the call goes into the 911 center, our officers get dispatched. Another option would be for a person in crisis, if they already have services available to them or set up for them, they can go that route as well, or they can call Crisis on their own. But if the call does go into the 911 center, our officers will get dispatched to the location where the individual was at. And when we get there, the very first thing we do is to be sure that the scene is safe, and again, that the individual is safe. And we begin to speak with that person, again, it goes back to the communication. So we talk to them to find out what's going on with them, and they will tell us potentially some things that, you know, as to what is causing this mental crisis for them at the time. And depending on what they say to us, they have a couple of options at that point. If they don't say anything to us that is, shows that they're a danger to themselves, so they don't make any kind of comment that is suicidal or homicidal or anything where they have taken any kind of action to try to harm themselves that we can see, they can at that point decide to go voluntarily to the hospital, which is called a 201, which is a voluntary commitment. And that's, the 201 and the 302 numbers just come from the Mental Health Procedures Act or just the section numbers, so that's what they're referred to as. But one option would be that, again, that they can decide that they voluntarily want to go to the hospital to seek help from a doctor. We will help out and we will facilitate by giving them a ride if needed or assisting any way we can to get them to the help that they need. Another option we have is if we are at an individual's residence and they haven't said anything that would provoke or allow us to take them forthwith, because they haven't made a comment that they're homicidal or suicidal, we could contact a crisis worker to come to the location where the person's at. So if they don't want to go to the hospital, another option again is for us to call the crisis worker, they come out to the location and do an evaluation where they are at. And then now, we have a new option, which as of January of this year, we have now the Center for Community Resources, which is located at 2100 East College Avenue, just across from Tubby's. So it's a new 24/7 walk-in crisis counseling center. So they do walk-in crisis counseling, resolution, and referral. And this is a very good option for the police. Oftentimes, when we call for a crisis worker, we have a pretty extended wait time, generally in the neighborhood of 45 minutes to an hour to get a crisis worker to come out to the location to evaluate. So obviously, we're tying up a lot of police resources for a longer amount of time. So it's more desirable now for us to be able to transport somebody to the Center for Community Resources. So we are very happy to have this option now here in Center County. Again, it's just, it's an alternative diversion from going to the emergency room for the person who's experiencing crisis, that they don't need to necessarily go for medical treatment or they're a security risk. So we can just take them there, and they get connected to individuals, and then they get connected to the services that we have here available to us in Center County. A voluntary admission, the person, again, they say they want to go to the hospital to be evaluated, they know, they realize that they have something that they need to speak to a doctor about. We will, like I said, take them to the treatment facility. When they go in voluntarily, they may sign themselves out. However, that person must sign a form agreeing to give three days' notice of self-discharge. This gives the individual some time to reconsider if they may want to stay for additional treatment, for aftercare to be arranged, or if the facility decides that they want to initiate an involuntary commitment process if warranted based on the evaluation they've been able to complete up to that point. It's important to note, for juveniles, adolescents between the age of 14 and 18 can consent to mental health treatment without parental consent. And also conversely, in the event the adolescent between that same age group is unwilling to consent to treatment, the parents can actually provide consent as an extension of their medical rights. But a physician must examine the juvenile and be in agreement with the need for the treatment at that time. So that's a little bit about a voluntary commitment, and then I've already touched a couple of times on a 302 or the involuntary commitment. But to kind of walk you through that process, again, we have somebody who is in crisis, but they're refusing to seek help. So again, the police can be notified, and this could happen a couple of different ways. One of the problems that we're trying to work out here in Center County is oftentimes, we may get a 302 warrant, which means that a responsible citizen has contacted the crisis and a delegate has decided to issue a 302 warrant, which means that we have the authority and the responsibility to take a person into custody to get them to the hospital for treatment. One issue, like I said, we have is sometimes those warrants are coming to our fax machine. We don't sometimes know that they're coming, sometimes we finally get a phone call from somebody asking if we've served them and we're able to find that we have that there. Problem that we're running into though is a lot of times is the lack of information that we have prior to going out to try to serve these. So our officers try to do as much follow-up before we go to get that information. But we're notified, again, a responsible citizen recognizes the need for this person to get help, or the individual makes a comment to the police. Like I said, in the first part with the 201, if somebody says something to us that is a homicidal or suicidal statement, we can then, if we hear it directly, we can take them forthwith to the hospital and be the petitioner for a 302. Like I said, so the next point there is the police officer hears, directly hears a comment that gives them reasonable grounds to believe that the individual is severely mentally disabled and in need of immediate medical treatment, then they can take the individual to approved facility for an emergency examination and petition for the 302. Otherwise, it has to be a responsible citizen, oftentimes that would be a family member who has observed or heard the behavior that led them to believe they should be 302ed. Mental health services, contact PD and advise them to the warrant. Like I said, that's one of the loopholes we're trying to kind of get taken care of to figure out a more efficient way to get these to the police department and get them served. But in the event that we do receive a 302 warrant from the crisis, we do respond to the location where the person at crisis is at and serve the warrant. That means that the person is taken into custody. So the individual is taken into custody on the warrant and transported to the emergency room for treatment. Center County, as of January of 2019, has contracted services with Service Access Management, they call them SAM, for the Involuntary Commitment Delegate Service. Their purpose is to assess the legality of 302 petitions, arrange serving the 302 warrant to the individual, arranging transport to the ER, and to find appropriate inpatient hospitalization if a 302 is upheld. Another big hurdle we have is bed space. They have a very difficult time finding bed space. We'll get into the time periods here in just one second, but oftentimes, bed space is a very, very big issue for our area. And the Mental Health Procedures Act is the law that governs the 302 procedure. It's very outdated, it's from, I believe, the 70s. So that's something else that we're discussing right now that probably needs to be updated, that law. All right, so the 302 has several parts. The petition has to be signed by a responsible citizen that if approved by the Center County Mental Health Administrator, who is Natalie Corman, or her delegate, would become a warrant and would require a person to be evaluated by a licensed physician. If the physician believes that the person is mentally disabled and in need of inpatient hospitalization, the person would then be hospitalized for up to 120 hours or five days. If the hospital determines that more than five days are needed to assess or to treat and stabilize a person, they conduct what's called a 303 hearing. And if the court approves, the person could remain in the hospital for an extra additional 20 days. Generally, if they are going to be held for anything over five days, they are transferred from Mount Entney to a different facility. To be considered legal, a 302 petition must meet five criteria. We have to establish that the person is dangerous to theirself or to others. That danger is due to a mental illness and not an organic issue or behavioral issue. That there's some type of furtherance of the threat. So basically, the person would have to do or have said something to show that they were willing to follow through with the threat. So for instance, within the last 30 days, acts such as planning or attempting suicide. The individual had to show that they were not willing to be evaluated voluntarily, refusing to go get treatment on their own. And then the 302 must be signed on Block A by a responsible citizen, or Block B by a licensed physician or a sworn police officer. And there is an affidavit that must be filled out by whoever is signing the petition, explaining why they believe that person is in need of medical treatment. So who responds, or who should respond, and some of the other issues. So the law in Pennsylvania mandates that the police serve 302 warrants, warrant for emergency examination, again, Section 302 of the Mental Health Act. Upon written application by a physician or other responsible party, setting forth facts constituting reasonable grounds to believe a person is severely mentally disabled and in need of immediate treatment, the county administrator, again Natalie Corman, may issue a warrant requiring a person authorized by her or any police officer to take any person, to take such person to the facility specified in the warrant. So some of the issues that we see or could be perceived would be the use of handcuffs. And our policy says that officers have discretion when it comes to this. If we have somebody who's very cooperative, they may opt to not handcuff them. If we have somebody who has been violent or has threatened violence, the officers may choose to go ahead and put handcuffs on that individual. They are not being arrested, this is not an arrest process, it's a civil process. So there's not charges coming, at least from the 302 portion. If there was some other crime that was committed prior to or during the commission of the execution of the warrant, that would be handled separately. They will be patted down though, they will be checked for weapons to make sure that if we do put them in our car, that they are safe and that we are safe transporting them to wherever they need to go. Again, I kind of talked a little bit about this, the lack of information provided by the delegate when asked to serve a 302. Again, our officers do a really good job of trying to contact the delegate to say, hey, you know, we want to know, I mean, you know, have the police been there before? Is this the person's first time in a mental crisis? Do they have weapons, do they have access to weapons, are there other people in the house? You know, what are they wearing, where are they at right now? I mean, there's probably 30 or 40 questions that we'd like to have the answers to before we decide to go and try to take this person into custody. Some of the concerns that we also realize that people in crisis may have, and some of the things that we've heard throughout our history of responding to these types of questions and to serving 302 warrants, is the issue of too many officers showing up. And also, the police presence is upsetting to a person in crisis, so we understand that. Obviously, again, we're, our biggest concern is everybody's safety, to make sure that we can get this person to a service that they need. Sometimes, depending on the circumstances, if we're told that somebody is being violent, we probably will have more than one officer show up to that call. So it's kind of a balancing act to be sure that we have the right personnel there to be able to safely get this person to where they need to go, but also considering their emotions and, you know, the fact that they may, it may not be helpful to their crisis to have too many police officers on scene. Fear of being arrested, again, they are not being arrested by us. We are simply there to try to get them to connect with the resources that they need, whether we have somebody coming out to evaluate them or getting them to somewhere where they need to go. Just the general mistrust of police, and that results in difficulty de-escalating when obviously a trusting relationship cannot be established. So just figuring out how we can get past just having a general mistrust of us showing up to come to help. And then some of the other things that we hear about changing the Mental Health Procedures Act, again, it was written in the 70s, but some people would like to see increased funding, protecting patients' rights, providing follow-up care, expunging the history of unnecessary involuntary commitments. Those are kind of the important local and state actions that we've heard. When somebody is taken in on a 302 warrant, there are certain rights that are taken from them, for instance, the right to own a firearm. So that's why that last one about expunging that history could potentially come into play. So that's just a real quick overview of the 201 and the 302 process and how we respond to them. Sergeant Stroud's in the room here tonight, so if there's anything more as far as our response, he's been handling these types of calls here more recently than I have, so I'm sure he'd be up to adding the insight as well. But that's all the slides that I have, so we're happy to take any questions about anything tonight or from our last meeting.
All right, board members, any of you want to raise your hand to be recognized? Okay, Pam, go ahead Pam.
Chief, I have a question on the pat-down. Are there, do your male officers pat-down female sex or mentally ill patients?
So the answer to that is they can, we've been trained that they can pat-down a member of the opposite sex. However, that is not desirable. We do have a female officer here, so if we can have an officer of the same sex pat-down that individual, that's what we would do. Another option that we have, and quite often, we rely on State College Police Another option that we have, and quite often, we rely on State College Police Department or Penn State University to provide a female officer when we are arresting a female, if we don't have one working at our time.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have another question, but I'm going to wait till all the board members speak.
Betsy, Betsy Whitman, go ahead.
Oh, great, thanks. I have a two-part question. It's actually about explaining your interview process when you're hiring a new officer. I was blown away by the length and the detail, the number of details and the kinds of details that were included in the paper application. And there are a lot of questions about family members, marital and date relationships. So I'm assuming that in those personal relationships, you're getting a read on their personality or way they interact with other people, which is critical. And, oh, okay, so, but, so I guess what I was curious about was, aside from the details that you ask for in the written, and I'm sure there's protocol or a certain number of questions you ask, what are you looking for in an applicant? What is that? And sometimes, it's kind of a feeling. I get that. But it speaks to your ability to set a culture in the department, to set yourself up as a leader, and also to hire people in your image to connect with your values. So if you wouldn't mind talking us through that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. I did see that you had asked that question in email, so I'd be happy to talk through that. So, yeah, our testing process, first of all, we begin with the National Police Officer Exam that we administer. It's a standardized exam that all applicants take. And then, from there, we interview the top 20 candidates, the top 20 scores from the written exam. And the oral interview board consists of myself, of Mr. Erickson, of David Panko. He's the president of the Patent Township Business Association. So we do have representation from the community as well. And then, of Sergeant Sean Albright and Sergeant Matt Chapanko. So, and you're absolutely right. It is, there's a sense of feeling that we have, that I do give all the oral board members a sheet of paper that has some of the qualities, exactly what you're talking about, that we want to look at or assess during their half hour to 45 minutes that we have with them. It's a very short time to try to make a really educated assessment on these folks. But mainly, we're looking at appearance, manner and bearing, their professionalism, their judgment, their motivation, their ability to present ideas, their alertness, the adequacy of their background, and just their general, just a general overview evaluation of, you know, each one of our assessments of how they answer the questions, the ability to think quickly on their feet. Some of the questions are multi-part, so the ability to remember what the questions were and to go through that. So those are really the main things, but obviously, we're looking for honesty, integrity, the things that, you know, the values that we hold so near and dear in the police world. But, so then, after we get through that process, like you had mentioned, there is a very, very thorough background check that is done. And, yeah, we have about an eight-page personal history form that looks into, like you had mentioned, their familial relationships. And we're actually, you know, obviously, we expect family to probably have positive things to say about those individuals. So we do look for past relationships as well. So if there's an ex-wife or ex-girlfriends, anywhere that we can go to get more information about a candidate, we try to dig very deep into finances, into their school records, actually going into the high schools where they attended to see if there's any kind of disciplinary issues. So it's a quite thorough background check, to the extent that we're able to find information and kind of build on from there. And then, after that, they get a conditional offer, and if they accept the conditional offer, they go through a psychological exam that's required by the state through MOPAC, and then also a medical exam. So that's pretty much real, a quick overview of our hiring process and kind of what we're looking for in the interview part.
Let me just add a couple of things. Part of how do we assess their character when we're interviewing them is the nature of the questions we're asking. Some of them are, well, there's quite a few of them that are situational. If you're coming across a situation such as this, what would you do? One of them is, you come up to a scene, you find a fellow officer hitting somebody who's already been handcuffed, what do you do? And then, you know, obviously, we're looking for certain answers, and we want to see how they arrive at those answers, not only what they do at the moment, but then, how do they follow up? Are they looking to take care of the person in the handcuffs as well as everything else? So they get scored on issues like that. And there are probably three or four questions in the battery that are of those natures, but are really things that people have done before and run into before. And, you know, how people answer those questions is really important on how they score in that oral exam. The other thing, just Chief Jolly mentioned about going back and talking to people. We will even go back and talk to neighbors of these folks. We will say, there's somewhere, there's a list of where he lived in the last 10 years. They may go back two or three places of residence and go knock on the door of the people next to him and say, hey, do you remember so-and-so? Can you tell us anything about him? So that's how thorough those background checks get.
Yeah. And quite frankly, that's where we're getting the information that we really want is from, again, not familial, you'd think that your family's probably going to give you a pretty positive review. So we're looking for ex-neighbors, ex-girlfriends, things like that to really get to it. So, yeah. And there are other questions, a lot of the questions are about integrity, but there's other ones about, you know, you see an officer accepting a bribe, or you see an officer removing property for someplace that, you know, committing a theft. So there's a lot of integrity and questions like that during the oral interview.
Actually, I'll probably enhance this hand up, but Betsy, go ahead if you have a follow-up.
I just wanted to, one I would like to suggest that you consider including a woman on that, the Board of Interviewers.
Sure. Yep, we can do that.
Yeah, I'd really, I'd like to see that. I think it would, I think it would add a lot. So whether you increase it to five or six, or you replace one, I'd like to see some thought towards that. My follow-up question is, actually, you touched upon it briefly, dudged in some of the questions, what would you do if you saw a fellow officer do X, Y, or Z? And so, it has to do with how do you essentially fire, get rid of a bad egg? And I'm going to use a word that nobody likes to hear, I'm going to use the word snitching or, you know, whistleblowing. It is hard for all of us to do, but there's been a number of articles that have discussed that, in particular with policing establishments. So, yeah, how do you, how do you go about, you know, following through on a problem?
Sure. So initially, after somebody does get hired, they go through their field training, which is a three-month program. And then, after that, they're on probation for one year. So at any point during that, if we see any problems, the officer could be terminated for, they're an at-will employee essentially for the first year. Beyond that, you know, so first of all, we're really lucky that we have a smaller department and kind of a tight-knit group here. But, so our supervisors really are the ones who are out on the road with all the officers. So they really have their finger on the pulse of what's going on. They're out on the calls with the officers. They see how the officers are interacting with people. So they're really kind of my, our first line of defense against having, you know, some type of issue with, you know, not following policy or ethics or wherever the case may be. I also am aligned in defense. It's my responsibility to make sure that our officers are out in the community, doing what they're supposed to be doing, acting in an impartial way. So it's my responsibility, but the supervisors obviously are a lot closer to the officers who are out handling calls. And the other way that, you know, these things come to our attention is by complaints. If we receive a complaint from somebody, you know, in the community about an issue they had with one of our officers, those get thoroughly investigated, generally by a sergeant. And, you know, we look into everything, body-worn camera footage, speaking with any witnesses, speaking with the person obviously who made the complaint. But all those things are looked at very closely to see, you know, is there a violation of a law? Is there a violation of a policy or procedure? And those things, again, are looked at very thoroughly. But lastly, is really our body-worn cameras. As I'd mentioned on our last meeting, the sergeants do spot checks, so they go through and kind of for quality control, just click on random videos and just watch and watch the interactions, watch how our officers conduct themselves, and really just kind of just see, you know, what they're doing when they're out there by themselves. You know, the sergeants are out with them a lot, but obviously, traffic stops, things like that, they may be out by themselves. So the body-worn camera footage is fantastic for us to go back through and just to make sure that the officers are doing what we think we expect them to do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let me just go back on the probationary period that Tyler mentioned. One thing we will do with, in terms of that probation and training during that, Tyler mentioned there's a three-month field training session that everybody goes through with a very, with an experienced officer who's been certified as a field training officer.
Correct.
So they have that level. If an officer goes through his first three months and we do not think he's ready, we will do another three months. And again, and if we have to, we've done that once, and if we have to, we would put him through another three, if we thought there was hope for him, we'd put him through another three months. But the important thing about having that probationary period is that we can terminate the employment of somebody at that point during probation with no other consequences. If we just don't think they're going to live up to our standards as a Patent Township policeman, which are higher than the minimum standards of the state, we will take that action during the probationary period. Outside of probationary period, it falls in under the collective bargaining agreement. So any action that would impact somebody's employment status, under the laws of Pennsylvania, they have a property right in that employment status. So they have certain, they have certain rights that we have to protect while we go through that. They have the right to grieve any of those things. So if we were to terminate someone, they have actually three levels of grievances they could go through. One, first one would be to me, the second to the board, and the last would be to arbitration.
Elliot, you had a question?
I didn't, actually.
Oh, you don't? Okay. Anita, yes?
Yes. I wondered if you could share with us about the applicant pool? And I commend the department for having the high standards. When you have an opening, what has been your experience? I know you have many applicants. How wide a search do you do for the applicant pool?
So that's a good question. So obviously, we try to recruit anywhere we can think of. I try not to not limit it. And so I send letters to anybody I can think of, anybody I've had, in fact, I am an alumni of Edinburgh University, so I have connections with their criminal justice department. So as far as up to Erie, you know, we're sending letters up to them. But, you know, with social media, it makes things much easier for us to recruit now. Before, there was a lot of advertising in newspapers and trying to get the word out that way. But with social media, we're able to put it out there a lot wider and, you know, really show everything that we have to offer to the candidates coming here. We do also send Brad Tuskovich, who's our Community Relations and Crime Prevention Officer, out to the academies, because obviously, we're very interested in folks who already have an interest in law enforcement. So he actually goes to any of the academies that are in session to, again, recruit there. He takes a PowerPoint that talks a lot about some of the different things. Oftentimes, people are, the candidates are very interested in salary. They want to know about our tattoo policy, were the two main questions we got this year. So he does a fantastic job going around and selling our department. In fact, actually, during the interview, one young lady said that that was what drew her here, was the speech that he gave. She could tell that he was very happy here and really liked this area, and really talked about how fantastic the department is.
You're mentioning about how you go to Penn State or the State College Bureau for a woman police officer if the occasion arises. Leads me to ask, just looking at applicants throughout the state, I am presuming most of your applicants are white males, but do you have a sense of women or cultural diversity or people of color?
Yeah, you know, and you'll actually be seeing this at the board meeting coming up here, but the certified list that we're going to bring to you has three women on it and one African-American male on it. That's out of the 13 individuals who passed everything moving forward here.
Well, and I would second Betsy Whitman's suggestion of having one of your committee that does the major interviewing be a woman. I was just thinking, if I was a woman applicant and I walked in and saw just all male interviewers, it would be good to sense that there was a diverse representation on the committee, including maybe adding cultural diversity or a person of color.
Yep, that's noted. Thank you.
Elliot, is that, you have your hand up for a question?
No, I would have my hand up.
Oh, okay. You're just propping it on the arm of your chair. Any other board members have questions?
I just, I know Cam has a question. I wanted to follow up on Anita's, following up on my comment about a woman on the interviewing board. I think a woman brings a different perspective on the community, and I think that's vital, whether the applicant is a male or a female. But certainly, if the applicant is a female, it would be a matter of comfort or affirmation, I should say, of the diversity that we're trying to achieve.
Certainly, I understand.
Thank you.
I have a question. You, it's my understanding that there is not a way to store complaints that can be accessed when you're hiring. You know, there's no way that you can go back and check somebody's record because they're not, it's not public information. I understand you have this very thorough investigatory process to ask as many questions as you can, and you rely on the honesty of the applicant to list their prior employments. Do you contact the employers where they've worked before?
Every single one of them.
Okay, good.
Definitely, yeah. And to your point, I see that the governor is in the process of signing some police reform bills, and one of those is conducting background checks on job applicants in law enforcement. So I think that might be getting addressed here shortly.
Yeah.
So, yep.
Yeah, let me just do a little follow-up on that. We will go back and interview prior employers, but we can't compel them to tell us anything. If you, if any employer, and I say, if you go ask a labor attorney what information you give somebody by about a prior employee, the labor attorney will invariably tell you, tell them the date you hired them and the date they left. So sometimes, it can be difficult to get that information. I think the database that people are talking about creating for police, especially when we're talking about some of the levels- we're talking about some of the level of issues that we are, is, will be very important going forward. But, you know, we try to uncover that information, but under today's system, some of it could not, I mean, we would not know it was there. Which is, again, why we go talk to so many people when we're, when we're doing these things.
Yeah, either way, we, every job that's listed, we do follow, I mean, we're talking oftentimes back to your high school job when you were working as an ice cream scooper or something like that. We'll still go back and check into those, so.
Betsy, you have a question?
Oh, yeah, a follow up to the difficulty in getting information from past employers. I remember Officer Sergeant Albright, I think that's who it was, last time, speaking of a file folder that he had in his desk drawer. I believe that was of incidences of use of force. Am I using the correct terminology? Anytime a weapon was drawn, anytime it was fired, anytime the pepper spray was used, that is somehow reported somewhere or not?
Use of force reports?
Is that what it's called, Chief?
Yeah, yeah, we do have, we, those are documented, that's correct, yes.
But they're, they're not publicly reported. And not public records that we would divulge either.
Okay. And is that, so again, I've done a lot of reading, national articles. But are those the reports that, that advocacy groups are arguing would be helpful in making applications down the road? Would they be helpful to you, Chief, in hiring?
I think what they're looking more is for complaints that have been registered by residents, citizens, or whatever, and then how those complaints are handled. A use of force does not equal a complaint. A use of force is, an officer drew his taser and pointed it at somebody. That's a use of force. So that may or may not, you know, normally that will not result in a complaint. I think what people are wanting to know is, when officers have had complaints lodged against them, how were they investigated and what was the result of those investigations?
Okay, thank you, that makes sense. And I think Anita had a question.
Yeah, Anita?
Very quick questions, and I don't want to take too much time because I want to hear from Pam Robb as well. On the 302s, Chief, could you tell us how frequently or how many 302 warrants the, our local county police have been called upon in the last year or two?
So I'd have to get you those stats as for specifically for how many 302s we've served. I do have the stats on how many mental health calls we've been to. So for 2019, we responded to 125. And in 2020, to date, as of a couple days ago when I checked, we were at about 45. But as far as how many 302s we've served, I'll have to get back to you with that number.
We can find that number.
I should be able to track that down for you, yep.
And this is a topic for maybe another discussion time, but if you were designing the best system of all, would it, and if there was funding for it, would it be helpful on some of these calls where the police are called out to have with you at that time, going with the person, a plainclothes mental health counselor?
That's a very difficult question. Just because, you know, if we're taking somebody with us potentially to a dangerous situation, that means that's just one more person that we're responsible for their safety and their well-being. Could they potentially be better suited to deescalate the individual and, you know, possibly not have a need for some type of use of force with the police department? So there's, there's a lot of different arguments you definitely could make. I can tell you our recent experience here, and again, something else we're trying to address here in Center County, is if we get a 302 warrant, in the, recently here, we have reached out to mental health to say, hey, you know, would you like to come along with us to go serve this? And the answer's been no, so.
Chief, I know you are helping with a countywide mental health task force that was started last year. Are alternative measures of, of providing service to mental, to patients with mental health issues, is that one of the outcomes that you're looking at as part of that task force?
Yeah, I believe, I mean, that's, you know, so definitely, that's something that we're reviewing and looking at. The task force has had a few setbacks, unfortunately, so we're really trying to make some progress to move forward. I am involved really in the law enforcement portion of it. So we have about three other work groups, really, law enforcement's involvement in these is generally, like I said, pretty much from the initial call and getting the person safely to wherever they need to be to. So after that, really, we are out of it. You know, if a 303 hearing is conducted, generally, we don't know about that. If the person is transported to, for instance, the Meadows or something like that for more advanced treatment, generally, again, law enforcement is not notified. So, any, but alternatives definitely is something that I think the task force is going to hopefully make some recommendations moving forward for us.
Anita? Oh, wait, Pam?
Yeah, one final question, a comment, and again, this might be for a future discussion. I can see with the 302 warrants and things which are clearly a crisis, I have a question going forward about how much we can encourage a system that does not overburden our police for what are more strictly mental health questions. And I will share here a bit of personal because I'm grateful to the chief for his interaction with me personally long before I served on the board. Because I had contacted them because I was receiving harassing emails from a mentally ill person in this town who I did not know, but who was sending me emails twice a week. And there again, that took time of our local police on what was more really a strictly mental health issue. And going forward, I think it would benefit, and maybe not in this official personal, this kind of a format, but to look at, are there ways that our police can be relieved of responding to things which are strictly mental health issues? And this maybe requires more looking at the infrastructure of the mental health services here in the county. And I know you sent out that 58-page wonderful directory of mental health services. But that is something where, and I appreciated the police responded wonderfully. There wasn't anything they could do, as it turned out, because it fell in that interim position, there's, there's no law against being mentally ill. And fortunately, I wasn't physically threatened, although the latest email in March said she wished I'd die of the COVID virus. But again, there was no violent or physical threat that could be acted upon. But there's a whole lot of middle ground here that I think our police are being involved in, that takes police resources. You're doing a great job, but I just wondered, going forward, as we continue this conversation, if we can be looking at ways to work with the community and other things that we might be supporting. So, thank you.
Pam?
Can you hear me or are you getting the feedback that we're hearing?
You sound fine right now, go ahead.
Okay, great. I just have to go back to the first session. And I have a comment and, and a few questions that, Chief, you can write me, you can answer me later. That is a teachable moment for me here. Let me first say thank you to Chief Jolly, Sergeant Strauss, who's not there, the county board of supervisors, manager Doug, and his staff for having this work session on use of force and police policy. Also, the outstanding questions from Mr. Ben Jones. I waited for the presentation of Sergeant Strauss before asking my questions and comments. My first question is, are there any cases that you may be aware of where police incident reports are not accurate due to information change or deleted from the report? Chief, you can answer that later. In writing an accurate police report, in so many situations, not here, the report favors the officer doing the report. It's not until public pressure, independent investigations, and sometimes judicial determination of the family members that justice is served. So many times, officers are acquitted by the jury of their peers. Even some government officials have so often turned a blind eye to the victim because of the color of their skin. For example, Walter Scott, state case in North Carolina, shot in the back fleeing from a police officer. The jury consists of six white males, five white females, and one African American female, which was deadlocked. It wasn't until a federal judge found the officer guilty of second degree murder and was sentenced to 20 years in prison. My second question is, when dispatched, is there a difference in the call from the dispatcher describing a peaceful march? Is it relayed as a rally or is it relayed as a riot, peaceful or non-peaceful? Especially when the protesters are people of color or a certain group, like the March for Ozzy Osaki. My third question is, recently, they're talking about Elijah McLean's case, 23-year-old black young man who's on his way home, had confrontation with police officers. Choked and on the body cam, the two officers were heard discussing the EMT using a drug called chamomile. And it's a, it's a, it's some kind of drug that sedates you. What he was injected was 500 milligrams by the EMT. He put it on the ambulance, then he was revived, then three days later, he was taken off a life support. Chief, is chamomile a drug that our officer can, can call into EMT to be used on a suspect? Finally, when, when our handcuffs or hand ties used, and our officers used, tied. Finally, Sergeant Strauss is truly blessed that he had very few incidents of any problems with being accused of being a racist or things like that. Typically, everybody is on edge when, he said, typically, everyone is on edge with dealing with police. And he couldn't say he noticed a difference between race, age, or anything. Everybody's behavior is different, and it doesn't, and he didn't notice that. Sergeant Strauss remember receiving many compliments, bells deserved. And when Ferguson, Missouri happened, he said, he was sitting in his, he was sitting in his car in front of a apartment complex around 2:00 to 3:00 a.m., when an African American gentleman came to the car with his hands up in front of him. Sergeant Strauss said, you can put your hands up, sir. What can I help you with? And he came over and he wanted to know that we all don't hate you. He said he had great experience here. In closing, I have a teachable moment for Sergeant Strauss and for all. When he mentioned that he had very few incidents of any problems with being accused of being a racist and, or things like that. And the comment, everyone is a little on edge when they deal with police. For the African Americans or people of color, they're much more on edge than you'll ever know. Because the decades of being targeted or profiled fear police is very real. Not just the black students, as my colleagues explain, but even more for the adults who have the same fear. Also, you also mentioned, Sergeant Strauss also mentioned the African American gentleman who approached the car with his hands up. There's an automatic reaction that we've been taught, and we're teaching our young in order to be safe. There's a commercial out now of an African American mother telling her daughter, if not by police, to automatically pull over, put her hands on the steering wheel, and don't move. Hank Aaron, baseball Hall of Famer, taught his two sons to listen to police, do what they said, so they can live for another day. This is more than about being a little on, at, on edge when they deal with police, it's about walking or being black is a crime. In the case of Antonio Smith, who was slammed to the ground and his wrist broken while complying to the first officer request to show an ID, which he did, then approached from behind and body slammed by another officer, it was like. The irony is that they harassed, they harassed, broke, broke his wrist, and it was all a wrong person, an innocent black man, a person of color. Maybe the state should read, say, maybe the statement should say, walking or standing while being black isn't a crime. There's a teachable moment for me also, that when Sergeant, Sergeant Strauss was describing the encounter with the African American gentleman, he used the word sir and gentleman. Those two words, they are so rarely used by police, and it shows respect, and it shows, you see me as a human being. Sergeant Strauss, I truly thank you for the respectful acknowledgement that you've given. In county police department use of force policy, signed by Chief Jolly, the first line states, persons regardless of environment in a situation shall be treated with courtesy and the dignity due to any human being. That statement sets the highest standards of a police department that every community should have. I am so proud of county police department with Chief Jolly's leadership and his outstanding officers to exhibit respect, dignity, compassion, and a willingness to help others regardless of the color of their skin or who they are. I true, I'm truly grateful for this opportunity to thank you all who continue to serve and protect our county community, a community in which I love. Thank you.
Thank you. And to answer your first couple of questions, so with our reporting, I am not aware of a time when an officer omitted something or went back and changed something in a report, or more specifically, a use of force report. Sergeant Strauss here, he actually approves reports, so he could correct me if I'm mistaken about that. Again, one big check and balance we have now is our body worn cameras. The officers are being recorded at all times, so if something doesn't match up between what they are saying in their reports and what we are seeing on the, on the video, then we have a big issue to discuss. And, you know, so I'm not aware of any time that there's been an omission purposefully or that something's been changed to try to cover something up. And hopefully, that answers your first question. The second question about how 911 is dispatching, I don't know the answer to that, I'm not sure how those are being put out. I can tell you, just here in our community, in state college, county has not been involved with any of the responses to any of the demonstrations. So what I've seen, though, is that usually leadership or an officer of state college police department generally will pull an incident. So if it were to come through a citizen and how 911 would dispatch that, probably would, it would depend on what information they receive from, from the caller. But generally, it seems that the state college is prepared for these, these demonstrations, so they, they are pulling the incident on their own, they're not getting dispatched through the 911 center. And then, I didn't catch the question for the third part. I know with the incident you're referring to, I'm familiar with a little bit, but I didn't, I didn't catch the question that you had relating to the paramedics giving the medication to the general. the medication to the gentleman.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
Would we, do we make any of those types of recommendations?
Oh, as far as, okay, so do the officers give EMT's recommendation as to what they would give a person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we do not. You know, if we are encountering somebody that we believe potentially is in maybe like an excited delirium type of state, or where they're just, they're just out of control and are, we're struggling to keep them under control, even if they're handcuffed sometimes, paramedics will come into the scene, will request them to come. And generally, sometimes we'll request them to come in order to help us by potentially giving a sedation. However, the paramedics that come, they don't take our word for it. They come and analyze the scene first, and then they actually make a phone call to the hospital to get permission from the ER doc to actually administer any kind of medication before that would occur.
Any comments from the public? Mr. Jones, is there anything you wanted to say today?
I have, I have one question with regard to the presentation, and I don't know, I sent the board some comments about the use of, about the deadly force policy, and I don't know if you want to talk about that later, or if I should mention that at all. What'd you say?
No.
Okay. So my question, first of all, thank you, Chief Jolly, for your, your presentation, and Board of Supervisors, especially Supervisor Rob's comments. Those are very timely and powerful. So with regards to the Mental Health Task Force and some of the discussions going on, is, is there any consideration, because here in Pennsylvania, if some, if you're serving a 302 warrant, a police officer has to be there. Has there been any discussion, and I don't have like a strong opinion about this, I'm just sort of curious what your thoughts or others are, in terms of like having people in the force who are a lot different than your normal police officer, you know, who maybe has training as a mental health expert or a social worker, but they're, you know, obviously, that requires money and investment, but are these, like, is that an idea being kicked around at all?
Certainly, not necessarily specifically that. You know, we've looked at a lot of different models as part of the work of the task force, and I don't want to give away all the, all the tidbits of it until, you know, they're ready to release the report, because things could change, obviously, by the time that. But Eugene Worgen, the Cahoos program, I'm sure if you're familiar with that. So we've discussed that type of an approach, where, you know, again, not necessarily having police officers involved in, in mental health calls and sending out, like you said, specifically trained mental health caseworkers along with an EMT to help, to help a person in a mental health crisis. You know, certainly, I believe that there still are going to be times when law enforcement will, will need to be involved with, with dealing with somebody in a, in a mental crisis. You know, if we're sending a caseworker who's unarmed to deal with an individual who has a firearm and is suicidal or homicidal, that's, that's not going to be, you know, some situation we want to put that person into. So I think, I think there still will be times when law enforcement will need to be attached to this at some point, but, you know, I think that the idea of having alternatives available rather than sending law enforcement out on all of them would be, would be favorable, definitely.
And so the next question I had has to do with the use of force policy. So the, the deadly force policy that's in the Patton Township policy right now is the state, state law. Is, now, I was reading, because there's legislation that was proposed recently in the General Assembly to change the state law, and the Pennsylvania Association of Chiefs of Police provided testimony. And what I gathered from that is that in their accreditation program, it requires the state law to be in there in terms of if you're a department and you get accreditation. Is that, is that correct?
I believe that's accurate. Sergeant Albright was unable to be here tonight. He's our accreditation manager. He'd be able to, I'm sure, address that properly, but I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay. So as I shared with the board and Chief Jolly, I think there are some real problems with the Pennsylvania law. The Pennsylvania law was passed in '72 with minor revisions in 2007, but nothing too substantive. And the law was passed before some significant Supreme Court decisions on when deadly force can be used, the most significant being Tennessee v. Gardner in '85, which basically did away with the fleeing felon rule, which said if you're a felon, and the only way to stop the felon is by shooting them, you're justified regardless of whether they're a danger. So in '85, the Supreme Court said that, that rule is no longer constitutional, that violates the Fourth Amendment prohibition on unreasonable seizures. And so I would, I would urge the board, as well as Chief Jolly, to move, to, to change that, to change the standard that's in policy, and maybe even do it through an ordinance. Doug knows the, the details of all that. And I would also, yeah, I guess, you know, one concern I have is like if, because I understand why it's in there, because the accreditation policy, and like, there's no ill intent on your part, but I am worried that this is the standard in Pennsylvania that's sort of being proposed to police departments. And, you know, I know this issue's been brought up with some other local police departments, like State College. And, you know, what I think would be ideal is if the, if the, if the standard was revised, and there was also communication sent to the Association of Chiefs of Police here in the state saying that this is a problem. And this continues to be, you know, a lot of legal experts have concerns about the constitutionality of the, of the Pennsylvania deadly force standard. And I think it would be great to change it locally and also make clear that this shouldn't be the standard that departments are urged to adopt, because it's highly problematic. In terms of looking for alternatives, you know, one thing I'll mention is the State College Burrow Council and the resolution that they passed a week or two ago. One of the things that's in that resolution is supporting pieces of legislation that the Black Legislative Caucus has put forward on police reform. And one of those recommendations has, specifically has to do with changing, changing the deadly force standard in the state. And so if there's any interest in the Board of Supervisors in, in supporting some of those proposals in a concrete way, adopting that proposal put forward by the Black Legislative Caucus is, is one option to pursue. So that, that's, yeah, I think that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you. Chief, any responses?
I don't believe at this time, no.
Okay. Elliot, yes, you have your hand up? Elliot, go ahead. You're muted, Elliot. You have to turn on your speaker. Okay. All right. We can hear you now. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm a little concerned about a request that we, on our own, should recommend something to the state. I think that these things need to be done by the state, the laws and regulations probably do need an updating, but I think our citizens have an active role with our legislators to make them aware of the problem and to insist that they actually take action on it. Because I think if we just arbitrarily change something on our own, is that going to be considered to be legal or not? But I think that it should be changed, and I think that there may be a different avenue that going through, rather than going through us, of getting a change. If it helps to go through us, then let's do it. But I think that we need to go through people in the state to get this done. One other thing is that if we're ready to make extra investments in police activity, I think that it should include the suggestion of having more mental health professionals available, not necessarily as officers, but as people that could be called on as resources regularly, because it, it seems that some of the problems that have happened in the last few years were caused by less than adequate available people, and maybe we should change that.
Betsy, you have a comment?
I'd like to actually request that we put on the agenda for our next meet, an official discussion of the suggestions that Mr. Jones just made. And I, myself, will be looking at what Burrow has done and looking at what the Black Caucus has called for. I agree that we're on thin ice when it comes to trying to take action at the local level, but I also know how fast or how slow things occur at the state level. And if this is a matter of life and death.
It is.
I think that it's okay to be a little daring and go ahead and do something, even though it's kind of thin. So if you could, Doug, if you could just put that on the agenda for our July meeting, and if I could ask Ben Jones to be on hand, perhaps to give an explanation.
He, he says yes, he can be there, be here.
Great. Thanks.
Can I have your table?
Yeah, come up to the podium, please.
Just to address Supervisor Abrams' remarks, it is the case that not every department in Pennsylvania has the Pennsylvania statute as its deadly force standard. So the, basically, the way it works, you have a constitutional standard, which is the bare minimum. State law can set a standard, well, it's supposed to set a standard either at that or higher. In Pennsylvania, it looks like it's actually below, which is what's problematic. And individual departments can put in place standards higher than what the state requires or what the Constitution requires. And so like the Pennsyl, or the Philadelphia Use of Force Policy, it never references the, the law in Pennsylvania. And it's sort of, it puts forward standards that are well above the, the standards in the state, and that's entirely legal, departments do that all the time. So just wanted to address that in terms of some of the legal things.
Thank you. Any other board members have comments? Yes, Pam, go ahead.
Chief, is this possible because Anita and myself are new to the board, that we can have some kind of meeting with the different chiefs of police? Like your monthly, or your monthly meeting that we can, as a board? I don't know how many more board members know each police chief in their township, in the township. It would be nice to know who they are and if they know us.
Police officers.
What's that?
I think she's talking about meeting the police officers.
Yeah. Do you, are you talking about potentially meeting and greeting, like, the officers, the rest of the officers in the township here, in Patton Township? Nope, we lost you.
We lost your, we lost your audio there.
Okay.
Mostly, I'm saying, mostly the chiefs of police in the different townships.
Okay, yeah, so we, we do have a monthly meeting, and I'd be happy to, to reach out to see if, you know, they'd be willing to have you come in and maybe just real quickly meet everybody and they can, you know, have a conversation.
Or if we can do a Zoom meeting, like Anita, or, you know, Anita, and any of the other board members. I don't know whether you all know each police chief personally.
Yep, yeah, so we've been, we've been doing Zoom meetings the last couple, couple months here, so we, I'm sure we could probably carve out a little bit of time for you guys to pop in, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Elliot, yes?
I know in some communities, they thought of having commissions that talk about these things more regularly. I just wanted to say that if such a thing is proposed, that we make sure that we have some of the chiefs or, and/or officers on that committee, so that we hear all sides of the story as it's being developed.
Any other comments from the board? Betsy, go ahead.
If I could, and this kind of concludes the set of questions that I opened up with about how you interview potential candidates, and then also how you discipline or oversee and then, and/or discipline if necessary. But I wanted to close those comments by saying, I believe that a leader, leadership is what sets the culture in any organization. It sets a set of expectations, it sets a level of trust. I, and I, I see it with you, Chief Jolly, and conversations that you have with your fellow officers. So I commend you for all that I've seen thus far and what we continue to see. And I think Patton is very blessed, as Pam says, to have you as our chief and this fine set of officers. Problems and all, wars and all.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other comments? I think we're wrapping it up here, five minutes early. So if there's no, nothing else, no more public comments? I guess you didn't receive any public comments via the Internet, did you, besides Mr. Jones?
No.
All right, then, I think that we can wrap this up, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Some would.
So, and, okay, moved and seconded, this meeting is adjourned.